Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the school committee meeting of Monday, August 16th, 2021. First on this evening's agenda is the acceptance of the school committee meeting minutes of June 28th, 2021. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
We have a motion by Mrs. Maroni and a second by Mrs. Davidson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that is a vote. Thank you very much. Seeing nothing under Communications or Superintendent's report, actually, the first thing on our agenda tonight is COVID update under Old Business. Dr. Croft?
Thank you. Thank you. So, just wanted to walk us through a few COVID-related subtopics. First of all, masking, looking at the survey results briefly, our Rockland's current vaccination rates as of the 13th, testing, our options and our current plan, and then our, finally, our next steps. So, I just want to walk through the survey. I'm doing this, I know you have this and you're studying it on your own, but I just wanted to do this to sort of pull it on the public record and make sure we're showing it publicly. So, this indicates who filled out the survey. We had 1,636 responses, pretty equitably divided as far as number of people from each school and size of the school. Under what circumstances, if any, do you feel students should be required to wear masks at the start of the 2021 school year? 54.5% said no student should be required to wear masks. 11.9% said students should be required to wear masks only if they're not vaccinated. 30.3% said all students should be required to wear masks regardless of vaccination status. And if this weren't a screenshot, it would tell me what percentage of the no preference is, but it seems rather small. Under what circumstances, if any, do you feel staff should be required to wear masks at the start of the 2021 school year? This is staff. So, 46.1% said no staff should be required to wear masks. 20.6% said staff should be required to wear masks only if they're not vaccinated. 29.6% said all staff should be required to wear masks regardless of vaccination status, and if you had no preference. Staff. So, we had our staff responses. Again, fairly evenly distributed. We had 242 responses. Which statement best reflects our opinion, your opinion, on mask wearing for students indoors at school? 39.7% said all students should be required to wear masks regardless of vaccination status. 34.3% said students should be required to wear masks only if they are not vaccinated. 19.8% said no student should be required to wear masks, and a small percentage had no preference. Which statement best reflects your opinion on mask wearing for staff indoors at school? 42.1% said staff should be required to wear masks only if they're not vaccinated. 35.1% said all staff should be required to wear masks regardless of vaccination status, and 19% said no staff should be required to wear masks. Under what circumstances? Now, this is the high school students. This is the responses from our high school students. We had 175 responses. Dr. Harrison sent this just to the high school kids. Under what circumstances, if any, do you feel students should be required to wear masks? 52.6% said no student should be required to wear masks. 24.6% said students should be required to wear masks only if they're not vaccinated, and 17.1% felt that all students should be required to wear masks regardless of vaccination status. And under what circumstances, if any, do you feel staff should be required to wear masks at the start of the school year? Rockland High School students, there were 175 of them, 46.3% said no staff should be required to wear masks. 31.4% said staff should be required to wear masks only if they're not vaccinated, and 13.7% said all staff should be required to wear masks regardless of vaccination status, and 8.6% had no preference. So, that is the results of the survey. Again, I just went through them quickly to sort of put it on the public record and just have it fresh. Our current vaccination rates?
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
What percentage of families returned the survey? What percentage of teachers returned the survey? What percentage of students?
Percentage of total students?
Like?
So, we had 175 respond, and we have 550, give or take, at the high school.
And then, teachers, it was about 250?
Yeah, that represents pretty much half of our staff and faculty, if you took all staff and faculty. The return rates were pretty good, relatively speaking.
And for the families? How many families did we set it up to?
1,600, are there 2,200?
Yeah, we had 1,600, but the number of responses could be misleading because if they filled it out multiple times for multiple children, so that number could appear a little bigger than it is as far as representing actual number of families.
And what should our denominator be? Like, what number of students, then?
Oh, I used to do about 2,300, about 2,300.
Okay.
So, you know, if it was one-to-one, it would be a pretty good response rate.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Okay, vaccination rates in Rockland. Jane, do you want to say anything about this? You know this slide a lot better than I do.
Sure, if I could maybe borrow yours. This has gone up approximately 6% from last week of the fully vaccinated. This is updated on Fridays. It's available to us, so you can see the 12 to 15-year-olds, up to 51%. They were at 45, and that is for at least one dose. And over further on the right, you can see the fully vaccinated percentage is at 38%. But we're hoping to be at that 51%. The assumption is that they'll get the second shot. So, we're at 51% for 12- to 15-year-olds, which is up 6% in one week. 69% for 16- to 19-year-olds, which is up 3% in one week. And all indications that we're hearing is that that trend is continuing on an upward basis, upward trend.
How were our clinics that we had? Were they busy?
Yes, they were. We had 59 people register. We had 15 no-shows. 44, so 44 were vaccinated, and of those 44, 29 were of student age. They may not have attended here, but they were of student age.
Okay. And they're all scheduled to come back for their second dose?
That is correct.
Great.
Is there a plan to do another vaccine clinic?
Not at this time.
Okay. So, current status, and I say current status because I think it's important to frame the conversation that we sort of have a policy in place. We have a, the governor dropped all masking mandates at the end of the school year. We are operating under a, basically, a no, it's up to you if you want to wear a mask. So, it's recommended in buildings, but not optional at all grade levels. Because our county is in a high-risk status, the recommendation from the CDC is that you're masking while you're indoors. Thus, Jane and I are being good citizens and wearing masks, even though I don't want to be wearing a mask. Recommended in buildings, but optional at all grade levels. Required on all buses, vans, and nurse's office. This is a federal requirement, so all students that get on a bus or a van or come to a nurse's office must put on a mask. Air quality. We have purchased air purifiers for every classroom in the district. We had them up and running for the summer programs, but they will be in every classroom come September. Fans are allowed this year, and we do plan to work with open windows. Social distancing, as close to three feet apart as possible. Lunches, gym, recess are back to regular operations with some distancing and vigorous cleaning. Our close contacts procedures are defined as individuals who have been within six feet of a COVID-19 positive individual while indoors for at least 15 minutes during a 24-hour period. The at-risk exposure time begins 48 hours prior to symptom onset or time of positive test if asymptomatic, and continues until the time of COVID-19 positive individual is isolated. And in general, close contact should follow the testing and quarantine response protocols. So, exemptions to close contact testing and quarantining. Individuals who are asymptomatic and fully vaccinated. An individual who is exposed to COVID-19, positive individual in the classroom while both individuals were masked, so long as the individuals were spaced at least three feet apart. Individuals who are masked on buses when windows are open. And individuals who have had COVID-19 within the past 90 days. So, testing and quarantining of close contacts. 10 days of quarantine for a close contact that chooses not to test and remains symptom-free. They must self-monitor for 14 days from exposure. Seven days of quarantine for a close contact who tests negative on day five, six, or seven and remains symptom-free. Must self-monitor for 14 days from exposure. And zero days of quarantine if you participate in the test and stay program. So, that's something we'll be talking a little bit more about, a DESI program, a test and stay program for seven days. It's a way to keep kids in school. They would mask at all times while at school activities unless eating or drinking, and self-monitor for 14 days from exposure. It applies to in-school and extracurricular activities. Okay, symptomatic testing. We have testing services available to us. We have the symptomatic testing, which anyone who has symptoms and wants to be tested, we have a program set up now so that we're testing on a daily basis. You want to say something about that?
Yes, if I could just frame this.
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
If I could frame this slide for a bit. This is copied and pasted from a webinar, the webinar that I attended with DESI's, the options. This is our menu. We do not currently have all these services. This is a menu of testing options that we're reviewing and considering for optional participation for families. Nothing, no testing would be mandatory. All testing would be, families would have the ability to opt out of, but these are the testing options that we're currently considering. So, this is in DESI's format, the way it goes. If I could just go through. So, the first one would be symptomatic, is symptomatic, and right now, we have that. We have a PCR testing, free PCR testing program where anyone is symptomatic or for any reason wants to test, we'll test you for free. DESI is offering a rapid testing option, which is the 15-minute turnaround time, and then they have ways in which they recommend that you still go forward and have the PCR test anyway. So, there's some layers behind, some layers behind what we're sort of seeing in the summary. And you can actually buy these at CVS, the binx now. You can buy them at CVS and administer them at home. What they're doing really is providing them in bulk to us and then having us test in bulk. All right, so that's sort of the first one. Second one is the test and stay program, which is what we're talking about, and this would apply to unmasked students as well as masked students. So, if we had a classroom where a kiddo or staff member came back positive, we could, if the parents, if the families chose, they could participate in the stay and test program, and as long as their child was, if the child was asymptomatic, they could come to school each morning, have a rapid test at school, wait the 15 minutes for the results, and if negative, they can go to class and resume normal activities. They could also participate in all extracurricular sports, all extracurricular activities, including sports. Right? If sports or a concert or some other school-sponsored activity occurred over the weekend, we would also provide testing over the weekend in that scenario. All right? So, that's the test and stay, and that's for at least five days. And then, the routine COVID protocol testing, what they're calling sort of a COVID safety check, is you test a group of children, students or staff, anyone who chooses to not opt out, and they all get tested at the same time. If there's a positive in there, then you do individual testing to that group of kiddos, whether it's 10 or whether it's 20. So, those are sort of the DESI options. They just came out, they're layered, the paperwork involved is tremendous. Parent consent will be required at all stages, but it is also all free. What we're doing now, we're paying $50 a test for.
PCR test.
The free PCR test. So, these are layered, this is a layered approach, a layered menu. We sort of follow up details behind them.
And we think we're going to adopt the test and stay program. Am I right with that?
We like it so far. We obviously want feedback from the committee. We don't see that any final decisions are going to be made tonight, but we definitely like this week to be hearing from people and what their thoughts are and get people's feedback. And again, I think we've said this a million times, things are changing on a regular basis.
Right.
Our COVID rates are changing in town, and so we'll be monitoring it.
And just to rewind for kind of the folks that are here and for those of the folks that are at home, sort of the purpose for our meeting tonight, this was not a regularly-scheduled school committee meeting. And so much has happened over the course of the past summer with variants and changes with everything that has happened since we left school the last time. And I know with everything going on in the world, there's a lot of anxiety as to what's going to be happening and what isn't going to be happening as our kids are going back to school. I also know there's a lot of sort of misinformation out there and rumors and things, and I thought it would be very important, and the committee thought it would be very important, to have a meeting tonight to sort of let everybody know not only where we are, but also where we're not. I think that's really important, and to sort of see the things that we're considering and the things that we're talking about in the spirit of transparency and openness and discussion. And I know there are some folks here that have some input, and I think maybe at our next school committee meeting, if should anything change, and we're looking to make any changes, maybe we can make sure on our next agenda that we have some time for open comments, so that if there's anybody who has questions or comments about the decisions that we'll be making, we can make sure that within our state open meeting law that we can allow that. But I'm glad that we can have this discussion tonight. I'm sure there'll be more discussion had as we, and questions had as we begin to talk about this this evening, but I just think this is a good step for our entire community to be open and have this conversation and just kind of have all our cards on the table.
Excellent. So, that's testing. So, next steps, we're going to complete evaluating our testing options and enroll as appropriate. There's quite a bit of enrollment work to be done with this. Continue current testing program in the interim. So, again, if someone isn't feeling well, we're testing. We are testing almost every day. So, if you're not feeling well and you want to test, call us. We'll get you tested. We're going to continue to do our best to communicate regularly with staff and families and students. That's our goal. And that's all I have as far as just an overview of, you know, where we are, the questions we have to deal with, and that's it.
Thank you. And before we open up to further discussion and comment, I just want to thank my fellow members of the committee. It's important to remember that all of these ladies and myself are volunteers and parents, and some of us in our own right, and all of us are here doing the best we can to educate ourselves about what's happening in the world around us, but more closely in the town around us, and at the end of the day, do everything that's right for our kids. So, with that being said, I know we talked about a lot of things, and there's probably a lot of comments and questions, so why don't we start out with the committee, if anybody has any questions?
Dan, I have a question.
Yes, please.
Over the summer, we've obviously had summer school and the enrichment programs. Have we been tracking the positive rates in the quarantine or any of that? I know we had that all through last year, so could you just talk about what maybe our numbers look like at this point? Because there have been some positive cases and things being shut down or closed and stuff like that, so I just wanted to bring that to the attention that maybe not everyone in our community realized that we were dealing with what we did during the school year throughout the summer program.
It's because we are a mask optional community. There's no masking requirement, and there's been no masking required at any activity since the last day of school from last year. We've run five programs, two enrichment, one at the elementary level, one at the middle school level, our sped summer school program, and we have continued to operate the daycare.
High school.
Oh, excuse me, and we have also had summer school for the high schools, so six. We had one, what I would categorize as a substantial outbreak. We had one student positive at the camp, and they were in cohorts, and he was in a cohort of 11, and nine of those students contracted COVID, and several of their family members contracted COVID. We have had two cases of kiddos at the daycare and two cases of staff at the daycare with very limited spread, with very limited spread there. One was a Friday occurrence, one, they contracted it outside and never came back in. So, it's been really, at this point, minimal. It's been about 50% of, as far as our staffing goes, and from the numbers from the town, as a town, right now, we have 51 active cases. Last year, at this time, we had four. 50% of the folks, approximately 50% of the folks who are positive are vaccinated, were vaccinated in some form in our current situation. So, how we approached it, how we have approached it, we've tried to do it as surgically as possible in just identifying the smallest group possible to quarantine and keep as many of the programs open as possible, and I think we've been really quite successful in doing that. I think we've learned, we all know, every single situation is completely unique, completely unique. No two outbreaks or cases are the same. You go through the same process, but the cause and the outcome is different every time. So, you do the best you can with, you know, with the situation as it unfolds, and just try to be helpful and kind, because it's generally when you're dealing with the families, they're frightened. They're frightened. And so, you know, we really try to get them, you know, the information that they need and the resources that they need and test their family members, you know, and anyone else that they want, just to, you know, give them some peace of mind, because it's as emotionally upsetting to families when it happens as it is physically sometimes.
Yeah, just a quick comment. I think really we're all frightened, right, of something?
Right.
Whether it be of getting sick or someone close to us getting sick or drastic changes in our restrictions in our life. Wherever it is that we're coming from, whichever angle of this, a lot of us are coming from a place of anxiety and fear. And one thing I want to point out about what you just said, which makes this school year very different than last. We have a lot of tools in our toolbox this year that we didn't necessarily have last year as school was getting ready to start back up. We didn't have effective testing. We certainly didn't have a vaccine. What you just experienced at the daycare, from my observation, you were able to deal with, and as you, the word you used was surgical, and I think that that's a great word for it, to be able to treat that particular outbreak in a very, break in a very localized way, and I hope and expect that we would be able to do that without any major changes happening between here and the start of school in the same way in individual classrooms or grades or schools within our current schools without having to affect the district proper.
Correct.
And I feel good, I feel some measure of relief with that, and also witnessing how well things were handled at the daycare and from an administrative of with things that were going on over the summer. Any other comments, questions, Mrs. Maroni?
I wanted to add to what you just said about having tools in our toolbox. One thing that is similar to last year, and we all need to remember, is that this is fluid, but we also need to remember, we got through last year by sticking together and being a team and communicating with each other. There are people here tonight with us, but if you are home or you are here and you want us to hear what you have to say, please don't hesitate to reach out to any of us, to any senior admin, your principals and things like that. We want to get through this year, just like we got through last year, and we don't want you to feel like you're out there without us listening. It is fluid, and we are hoping that we just sort of keep things as low-key and less stressful than we have to be. We're hoping the kids get to stay in school. I have a middle schooler and a high schooler, and yes, I would like them out of the house, but I think it's normal for them to be in their classrooms. So, and I think we pretty much all feel that way. I don't want to speak for anyone here, but we did stick together last year as a unit, senior admin, everyone, and parents at home. I know we had a lot of families reaching out to us, as well as all of them, so I just want to say, don't feel like you're in your canoe by yourself. We will get through this again this year, and hopefully that will be it for COVID. Go ahead. I'm taken from you, sorry.
I just think that the most important thing that we do is make sure whatever plans we choose, it's to maximize the student's ability to be in school full-time as much as possible, whether that involves wearing masks at times, whether that involves the test and stay program, whatever options we have available to us, because I think when you look at globally what COVID has done to kids, the biggest risk to them is not being in school full-time, and so whatever we can do to make that happen should be our guiding principles.
I agree with that. Any other comments?
No, I would just like to say that I agree with that. This summer, people have been out without masks, traveling, going on vacations, amusement parks, concerts, even myself, and without a mask on, so I think it's going to be very difficult to mandate wearing a mask in school. I think it should be optional, or, no, I think it should be optional, optional or up to the parent's discretion. Yes, if numbers do get high, maybe we sit back and reevaluate and have another meeting and revote and do what is necessary, but I think overall, with all the programs that we have, the test and stay, the air purifying, mask on the transportation, and so many other small things that add up to keep the children safe, everybody wants our kids back in school, including us and everybody around here, so I think that's what hopefully will happen.
Absolutely. And I hope vaccination rates continue to go up and people stay as safe as they can, you know, just due diligence at home, washing hands, covering our mouths, doing all the things that we try to do to stay sick from all the maladies and diseases that are out there in the world. But as I said at the beginning, I think what we all want is what's best for kids and what's best for families, and choice is a very big part of that. I feel very uncomfortable at this point mandating anything to anybody. You know, I think that with homes that are being vaccinated and feel as though they can wear masks to school, they can do that. If you're not vaccinated and you want to wear a mask, you can.
Right.
As of right now, I think it's also important for us to stay consistent with state guidelines, and right now, the state has made some advisories, which we'll make advisories too, and stop short of. short of having mandates. So I feel happy that we felt really good going into the summer last year with where we were. I feel pretty good knowing that that's where we still are as a community and a town. Looking forward to kids being able to communicate and learn to talk and, you know, read mouths and all the things that developmentally happen in schools. So as of right now, I feel very comfortable with where we are. You know, as far as where we're going, I don't know, and I don't think anybody of us do, and things can change from the state level down maybe, but for right now, we control our own destiny in Rockland, and I think it's important that we, the choice be a big part of that.
I'd like to make one more comment.
Please.
I think it's important that we keep an eye on what's going on locally and within our own local area, because adults have done such a great job in Massachusetts, our infectious rates are much lower than other parts of the country, and we're not seeing big outbreaks in kids at this point. That can change in the space of a day. Unfortunately with COVID, at the beginning, things were changing sometimes twice a day. And so I think it's a conversation we need to keep having and we need to keep looking locally and see what's going on around us and do what's best for kids based on what's going on here. And so I agree with you right now, but I expect that things will kind of, you know, be a roller coaster of sort of what's going on around us over the next couple of months, and we should respond and do what needs to be done to keep our kids healthy, and that includes not just physical health, but emotional and mental health, so.
That's a very good point, and that we all suffered from that last year, particularly the kids. I mean, we've seen it with our own kids, I know I've seen it
Yep.
in my own kids, and I think that emotional health and developmental health are equally as important as physical health.
Yep.
I think that's a wonderful point.
One more question. I know we're trying to take the approach of being very, as you said, surgical and taking each situation as it is. Obviously DESI and the state, the hybrid models and all of these other things to go remote are no longer on the table.
Correct.
So what is our plan? I don't want to say if we had an outbreak that we had to close, say Memorial Park. What is the plan? Are they just not in school? Are they logging in virtually? Maybe it's sort of early for that. I just want to let parents know what maybe those responses and those plans, you know, maybe at letter F, way down the case, because hopefully we don't ever get to those, but what would be the response that we would have to take to get?
As of this moment, we would not have the capacity to do a remote option. People have to understand that. We assembled a remote wing of our operation to run. We hired extra teachers, we bought software, we did all kinds of things with Google Meet and other platforms. That work will not be available to us. As far as an arrangement, you know, we have to negotiate with the teachers. How are they going to care for, say, if their entire class gets quarantined? Right now, we have practices in place where teachers are expected to update their Google classrooms and keep assignments online and work like that, so I assume that things like that will be going on, but we'll have to negotiate the details of how we would be servicing students if they were, if they were out. But as far as our capacity, we won't have, we won't have the remote option in place the way we do, the way we did last year, so it won't be as seamless.
And they took it off the table. You asked the same question I was gonna, I just wanted to say this to, at home. Last year, we had the option to bounce to remote if needed, so when we had to close the high school for two weeks, they all went remote. DESI took that off the table this year. We don't, there is no remote option. We cannot just bounce a whole school into remote. You can't just bounce little Johnny, sorry if your child's name is Johnny, little Johnny home for 10 days. The teacher and the parent are going to go back to the old fashioned way of trying to communicate to get that child work and studying and all of that. So it's not, it's almost, I think as a parent, a little bit more scary because we are going back into that, and I do remember that we had some struggles with that last year, so I'm hoping that we don't this year because there's no other choice. We're going to have to sort of master that plan because we don't have the remote option plan. And I hate to say it, but I do think it will happen. Some child is going to be home quarantining, and we're going to need to figure out what our choices are and how we're going to handle that so that everyone feels supported. I think that's a lot of this year is making sure that we are supporting everyone in every little scenario that's going to come across. Last year, I feel like we had all of the scenarios sort of thought about, and this year, I hope we don't go in. I know you guys are doing your due diligence. I just want them to know at home that you're doing your due diligence and you're trying to think of all those scenarios to figure out so that no one's left home.
I think, I think it's important to say also, in our, in our experience over the last year and a half, if mandate were in place and everyone were wearing masks and there were a case, the chances of us surgically dealing with that are much higher than if half the kids are not in masks. So I want to put that out there.
Right.
I, not that anyone's asked, but I personally agree. I don't want, the governor's not going to tell people to wear masks. I don't want to tell people to wear masks. But I strongly recommend it. That's, you know, we think that if, if everyone were in masks and we had an outbreak, we could keep more kids in school. So it's a risk. It's a risk reward like we talked about last year.
Right. And if you're really nervous to have your kid, student, be needing to be home, then the opposite would be then to have them wear a mask, have them not involved in sports, have them sort of, here's your choice, you're choosing school over all of those other things. I, as a parent, wouldn't want to take all those other things away from my child, but that's what I'm choosing. So I just want that to, this is parent choice at this point in our day.
But I, real quick, I do think the test and stay, if we do choose to adopt that option, will hopefully lower the number of students that don't have to be in the quarantine or miss X amount of days of school.
Well, that's a big difference
Yeah.
from where we were last year with households needing to go home.
Absolutely.
And again, the goal here is to make sure kids are in school, and that may be one of the biggest changes from last year to this year to make sure that we meet that goal.
Right, and sort of where I am now on those three options, and I would like some more time, because it is very new, and to go into the underlayers of it is, I think the test and stay does help keep kiddos in school and in extracurricular activities safely, do you know, and which is good for their whole being, social, emotional and educationally and physically, but the other two, the pool testing, I have some real reservations about, it just, I really do, having kiddos go through that every week or every set period of time. I think, I think we're small, we're nimble, we're targeted, we're experienced, we all want kids in school safely. I think with the test and stay and our PCR ability, I think we can do it. I think we've done it and I think we can do it. I'm intrigued a little bit with the, having some, the antigen, having the rapid available to us, you know, quickly to determine if someone comes to the nurse's office and they're not feeling well, give them a quick one and then also give them the PCR one, and that's why I want to go into the layers, but I also don't want to be testing kiddo twice if he doesn't need to be tested twice. I'd rather wait the 12 hours and get the results at 6:00 the next morning than test them twice.
We'll be testing them each day, right?
For, for the test and stay, it is a test, it is a test every day.
Those are asymptomatic.
And just, to just to know what it was like, I just went and did it today myself.
Is it similar to the regular?
I tried the binax now, today, just to try it myself, and it was very simple. You know, I mean, if you're going to ask the kids to do it, you know, or the teachers to do it, I did it. And it was the same as being tested, it was the same as when, you know, I was formally tested, you know, through the PCR program.
Was it just the smaller cotton swab?
Yeah, it's a smaller, at the base, you know, at the base, very quick, 15 seconds.
Okay. But the PCR is for the symptomatic, correct?
Correct.
And then the binax is for the exposures who are asymptomatic.
They're also recommending that we have it for the symptom, for the symptomatic kiddos who come to the nurse during the course of the day. We have been skipping that and going directly to PCR, and I think that's worth it.
I agree with you, because I think there's more false, what we've seen is more false negatives with the rapids
Correct.
than with the PCRs.
Correct, which is
So I think you're probably creating a bigger exposure risk if you're getting false, a false negative and sending them back to the classroom than waiting for the PCR and have them, and have an answer the next day.
That's, is my sense as well, and again, I just want some more time to go into the underlayers of all, but if I, if you, I needed a recommendation today, I would say, keep our testing program. I think it's unparalleled, and, and do the test and stay with obviously the ability for families to opt out of that.
I don't, and I also don't see a benefit to doing the pool testing.
Agreed.
I don't see how that helps our, us keep our kids safe.
Yep. Dan?
Quick comment before I ask any other questions. We, I'm not, I'm neither an educator nor a physician, but we are all very blessed to have both at this table. Dr. Small is a great ref, a great resource for what we've been experiencing over the course of the past summer, and she's been a good source of information for me and my family, and I just want to point out that our community is well-served by having a physician sit here on this committee. And, you know, everything that we've been working through the summer and chatting through administration and staff has been, you know, as open and respectful as it possibly can. Any other questions or comments on this particular topic?
No.
Okay, so
Ms. Maroni? I'm very sorry, with all due respect, but we have six family members here that came out tonight, but we do have some comments and some information that you may want to hear before deciding any testing factors or masking.
So we're not making any decisions, so we're not making any decisions tonight?
No, sure.
So based on open meeting law, we want you to, we want to hear that, and we want to hear your comments too, but what we can't do with state open meeting law unless it's on the agenda, which is why I want to make sure it's on next meeting's agenda.
We're given a whole lot of information with the invite on the survey threads, so that's why we're here.
I'm glad you're here, and we want to, and we do want to hear from you, and I invite you to come back to our next meeting so that we can discuss and talk about that. And I assure you, as of right now, unless, unless a committee member wants to make a motion to change anything that we're doing up to and including wearing masks, and if there isn't a motion to be made
No motion.
there's nothing to be changed that happened until, that happened differently since the end, the close of school last year.
With respect, Mr. Chairman, you're basing a lot of your decisions on faulty information. That's what we came here to deliver.
We're not making a decision.
The CDC is phasing out the CPR tests, PCR tests on December 31st because they cannot distinguish between influenza, COVID-19, or SARS.
Because on the CDC website, true.
That test is going to be completely phased out.
Inaccurate.
It's right on the CDC website. It's not making a sound.
Okay, I haven't had that updated.
Rapid indigestion is only 80% accurate.
I'm not saying it was you. I just said I wasn't aware.
The point is, these tests are faulty. You're picking up common colds, influenza, nothing to do with COVID in most cases. So your information, decisions have to be based on that accurate data. This is what we're talking about.
And we're still, and we're still considering all information. We're not, there is no decision that's been made tonight. We're just placing, what the graphics that you saw were from DESI. Those are not Rockland School District slides. So what we're here to do tonight is to put in as much information out based upon what we are receiving to present to you, the community. No decisions are being made. We're not mandating anything.
When can we present?
We will, I've asked tonight to have, next meeting to have audience comment, open comment, for everyone to be here, and I would welcome anybody in the community on whatever your opinion is to be here to discuss.
Will we have access to each of you to send your information?
Absolutely. In fact, please feel free to stay after the meeting. I'd be happy to have personal conversations with anybody, phone calls with anybody, and without speaking from, to any of the rest of the members of the committee, I know that they feel the same way. We're here to listen, and we're here to represent our community, represent our kids. So by no means am I telling you that you're not going to have your chance to talk or for us to have the chance to listen. We will, but we need to do it with respect to state law and how we run meetings. So putting a ton of information out as much as we can right now, and we will continue to do so, with the goal to be before we open school, to be able to have the opportunity to hear comments and questions and discussion from the community.
With all due respect, our school's opening in two weeks.
And we will have
The decisions need to be made soon.
And we're going to be having a meeting
We have a meeting next
before the opening of school.
Next Monday, on the, August 23rd is our next meeting.
So it seemed, it seemed prudent to be able to have a meeting to put as much information to inform as many people as we can, and absolutely there will be open discussion at that meeting.
Thank you.
Okay.
Very well. Thank you for putting out that survey, Doctor. That was great. Please give people opportunity to speak their opinion. Thank you.
So seeing no motion to make any changes as of this moment, we will move on to new business, and on this evening's agenda is the elementary school handbook. Dr. Cron, do you have any comments about any changes or recommendations about it?
You know, there's so many things in here about math and alphabet and English, and it's, I'm just so darn happy there's very little in there about COVID. No, I don't have a lot to say about the handbook. I think there were very few changes to it. This is a first reading, I'm assuming. I don't know if the committee has any questions?
I just have a comment regarding the arrival and dismissal times.
Yep.
And that has changed for this year, and that has been fully communicated to
Yes.
elementary parents.
Yes, and coordinated with the bus and trans, with bus transportation
Okay.
which is going exceptionally well.
Oh, that's good. Our number, regarding busing, just why you brought it up, are the numbers high or on average?
The numbers are high. We can accommodate them, they're within budget, and Liz Norris, to my right, has done a remarkable job with busing this year, and will change how we've communicated with first student, how we've communicated with families, and it has been seamless and outstanding. So thank you very much.
It's not an easy job.
It is not.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
So we'll take a motion to table the elementary school handbook until we can have the opportunity to have a second reading.
Motion?
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor? Hi, thank you very much. After that, the last item of business on the agenda this evening is public service announcements. We'll start with you, Mrs. Hennessy.
I wanted to thank everyone that did come out today, and I know there wasn't the opportunity to speak based on state regulations in our meeting law, but hopefully, as has Ben mentioned, please reach out to any of us, those that are here, those that are watching at home, that are going to watch on our YouTube channel later. Hopefully, we'll have a good kickoff to the new school year. I did want to send a couple thank yous out there. I wanted to thank first, the Rockland Education Foundation, had the pleasure of going to their golf tournament, and some of our other administration was there, meeting a lot of amazing folks in our town that do so much for our students and our kids, and I was very happy to participate and look forward to next year and into seeing all the great stuff that that Rockland Education Foundation does for grants and things like that. So it was a great time. I wanted to thank the coaches, coach specifically, Coach Diana Newcomb, who was running the female conditioning for any females in ninth through 12th grade. They had the opportunity to do twice a week conditioning as a group for any fall sports, which I thought was great to keep, personally kept my daughter active. Also wanted to say good luck to all of the high school students that are trying out for sports. Those are coming up next week, I think, our tryouts and everything, so good luck to that. And then just a reminder to everyone who isn't aware of it still, that there is an RPS, Rockland Public Schools app, that you can download right to your phone, keep track of all great information, and you can look at that school specific or just out of district wide, so that's all I had.
Very good.
And good luck. I mean, school starts in two weeks, I don't know where summer went, but hopefully everyone did enjoy their mask-free summer, so.
Thank you. Mrs. Maroni?
I wanted to thank, send out some thank yous as well to the lunch ladies that have been serving the students of Rockland and the families of Rockland all summer long. Thank you to the nursing staff and the COVID staff that have been coming in weekends and evenings and everything else to keep our town tested. Thank you to the custodians that have been prepping our schools for our kids to come back in two weeks, along with the teachers, to, I'm sure they're already in prepping their classrooms and getting their lessons plans together. I wanted to thank the senior admin and you all for working hard all through the summer, getting us ready to get started. And school supply list should be out on everyone's PAC pages and the school website and the app. If you haven't seen your school supply list, please reach out to your principals, they should be sending them out. And I think that's all I had, two weeks from today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Davidson?
I would just like to reiterate, the Rockland Education Foundation Golf Tournament, it was, thank you to everyone, especially the board of directors for putting that together. Wonderful event that impacts many Rockland students. Also, the Phelps Elementary School, the elementary is on, on time for the most part